Okay, very good. Um, I, I put together an agenda. I'll go ahead and start this meeting. I'm just gonna call it order. Um, and I put together an agenda, but I'm just gonna dispense with all the formalities and basically turn it over to Kelly. Um, uh, and I first want to say thank you so much, Kelly. For, uh, I mean, we just made you an official member, what, like last month and you're already? It's awesome. I like this. Uh, so, uh, thank you so much for the time and energy that you've put into, um, this, uh, special meeting. Uh, I didn't, I really didn't want to wait for the rest of you here on the, on the phone or on the Zoom. I really didn't want to wait. Um, I thought this was just something that's kind of really falling in line with where we are and what we're doing. Uh, so the timing is really cool. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it over to Kelly and Kelly, you can, uh, do the introductions. How's that?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Garn, and thanks everybody for joining on, you know, quick notice. So, long story short, my family was up north skiing at Boyne maybe a month ago. And I was walking downtown Harbor Springs and I saw this really beautifully done little like decals sticker that was in one of the shop windows that talked about Emmett County recycling and some of the awards that they had won. So I took a picture of it with my phone and just walked in and started talking with one of the, um, shop owners and she was just raving about all of the, you know, amenities and things that Emmett County recycling has done. Um, and so I just really piqued my curiosity. And so I randomly called and got ahold of Lindsay Walker. Who is, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, you're a director of outreach. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, so she does our outreach, our compost program and our commercial accounts.
Yeah. So she is, Andy, I probably, probably will attest to, is an incredibly enthusiastic person and, um, was just so generous with, um, her knowledge, her time and really just saying, okay, let's, you guys come up and do a Murph tour, tour, let's, um, let's do a call, anything that we can help you with, we will, which was just really, really incredible. Um, and so then she led me over to Andy. Um, so Andy Tolzoroff is who we have on the call today. So thank you for being with us. And she is the director of Emmett County Recycling. Um, and so I'll give you a little bit of background on her. Um, but essentially what the hope is for today, and Andy and I, um, had a chance just to talk for a few minutes on Monday is just as we're now kind of starting, we have people that are gonna be working with, um, Allegan County that are on our team. And now we're starting to shape our goals personally for the three municipalities. My hope is, is that even though Andy sits in a county seat, that she, um, can really help us shape our goals of like what program we want to take on, how we want to work with Allegan County and just really give us like a thirty thousand foot view of what is possible. Um, because they have done an amazing amount of work in thirty years and we have, um, a lot that we can learn from them. So that's, that's the hope of this call today. Um, but Andy, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Um, but first I'll give them a little bit of background. Um, so she, Emma County, um, if, if you guys didn't have a chance to click in the website, operate, um, operates the comprehensive waste and recycling program in Northern Michigan. So it encompasses, um, Harbor Springs and Petoskey are the two main, and then a lot of rural area all the way up to, um, Michigan City. So it's huge. Um, and then she's been there since two, twenty fifteen, started as an intern and was overseeing all the recycling projects. So we need to learn from her on that. And then she is now, um, the director and loves sharing her knowledge and experience with groups that are interested in recycling and composting. And her background is she went to Northern Michigan and has a degree in environmental studies and sustainability. So she's an expert. Um, so with that, um, I'd like to turn it over to you, Andy, and then I have a group of questions too, which I'm sure maybe you'll answer some with your slides. And then if not, we'll get to that when you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you guys and thank you for having me. Um, I do have a lot of slides, um, a lot of information to share. So I really tried to, um, answer a lot of the questions that, um, Kelly and I had talked about in the, um, PowerPoint. So I think probably the best way to do it is I'll go through the PowerPoint, but if we want to pause and have any discussion on that topic at the time, um, just stop me and I'm happy to answer questions, um, as I'm going through the slides. And so I will get started with a little bit of, um, overview of what our program is, what it looks like. And then, um, I get, go into a little bit more detail about the specific questions that you guys are interested in. All right. So do you guys see it in presentation view?
Yes.
So, Emmett County Recycling, this picture is where we started, um, thirty years ago. So we were just a transfer station. Um, one of the reasons that we got started was when, um, all the township and municipal dumps were closing. Um, the county was kind of responsible for figuring out, um, what we're gonna do with waste that was being generated in the county. Um, in Emmett County, they were not interested in having a landfill. Um, so in order to do the right thing and to not, um, have a landfill, they started a recycling program and a transfer station. So all of our garbage is hauled to Onaway, um, which is in Preskill County, um, east of us. And we do our best to keep as much material out of that landfill as we possibly can. So this is our facility, um, right now. Um, as you can see, it's pretty big. We down in the bottom half, this is our, our recycling, this is our Murph. Um, this is our transfer station. And then we have bulky area recycling and a compost facility. Um, so I can go into a little bit more detail, but this is an overview, overhead shot of our facility, which is located in Harbor Springs. Um, so I know one of the things that you guys are interested in is policy. So, um, one thing that we really base most of our, um, policy that still works to this day. Um, it all really started back thirty years ago and we still stick to it today and it has really helped shape our program. We have a solid waste ordinance. And the ordinance includes flow control and pay as you throw. Um, so this is more for garbage. Um, so I'm not sure if you guys are interested in garbage or if you guys are just recycling, but really, um, by having our ordinance, our ordinance helps hold, helps us, um, kind of have some ground to stand on when we are trying to, um, implement flow control and pay as you throw. So flow control is, um, all residential garbage from Emmett County must come through our facility. It must come through our transfer station. And that is so, we, so, um, I know one of the questions Kelly had asked was about single hauler. Um, and our flow control is pretty much the opposite of that. Um, it's to allow multiple haulers in our area. Um, one hauler can lead to monopoly. Um, that's not good for residents, it's not good for businesses, they set the prices, they set the terms. So by us, um, having flow control and everything coming through us, all the waste haulers. And again, this is all for garbage. So this isn't for recycling, but all the waste haulers are required to pay the same price at our gate. Um, so that way it's, in theory, it levels the playing field for, um, businesses and residents. Um, and it also, um, cause in our area, we have a couple of really big haulers. We have American Waste and GFL who own landfills. Um, and then we also have a couple of small locally owned haulers that do have to come through us. So by, um, allowing them or requiring them to have the same tipping fees and, um, they in theory should be charging the same toll residents. Um, pay and you pay as you throw is a huge one for, um, recycling, to encourage recycling. Um, a lot of communities for garbage pickup, they, um, have the garbage is paid for by the municipality and they, and the resident is responsible for recycling. Um, and that doesn't incentivize recycling. And if you're not paying for your garbage, you're not responsible for how much you're throwing away. For us, um, the amount of garbage you have is how much you're paying. So if you only have one bag a week, you're paying for one bag a week as opposed to, um, like a dumpster a week or something like that. So really making people think about what they're throwing away. Um, and then when we're, when we're forming recycling programs or policies, um, we really keep the three Cs in mind. So we want them to be convenient, comprehensive and cost effective. Um, so when we're looking at programs, is it convenient? Is it accessible? Um, is it easy to understand, easy to follow? Um, comprehensive kind of goes with the convenience. Um, we don't want to be too picky on what is and is not recyclable. Um, we want it to be, um, most things are recyclable and it is easy as that. And, um, we need it to be cost effective, um, for residents to want to use it. So any questions on this policy, um, slide?
Andy, when, when did that go into effect?
This, this has been, um, ever since we started, so nineteen ninety.
Wow.
Was that, was that a major fight with the haulers to?
So, and this does go along with our solid waste planning. Um, so every county is responsible for doing that. And, um, this is another thing that is coming up. We'll be doing our solid waste planning again. And it's, uh, very important that we keep this policy in place for us to keep being able to do what we do.
Andy, I had a question. I wondered, um, first of all, thanks for being here. I wondered, what is the average, um, waste bill for residents?
I do not know that. Um, I know the tipping, pe, tipping fee, which we charge by yard and a lot of places charge by the ton. Um, but we charge about thirty dollars a cubic yard for the waste haulers to bring in compacted garbage from the garbage trucks.
And so did I understand that correctly, that if I, as a resident, produce one, like a quarter, do you go by the pound then? So when the, when the garbage haulers come through and they pick up my garbage, they know how much at my address I had out at the curb?
So what the garbage haulers do is, um, they have a bag system where you can, um, pay for bags upfront and then set it out. And if that bag is out, they pick it up and each hauler has a different color bag. Or you have a different range of sizes of carts that you can roll out to the curb. So I think, um, you do pay monthly for your cart, but you can pick which size you want to use based on how much garbage you're generating.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and this may be something you wanna, wanna handle later, but, um, uh, funding for this is through the county?
So. Yeah, um, I, I can't. Um, so because we operate recycling and garbage, the funding for the transfer station comes from the cost of paint, of throwing garbage away. Um, so that is one thing. I think it is my next slide. Um, so no county tax dollars have been used for operations since nineteen ninety-one. Um, so we used a little bit, I think we had a millage to get started for three years, but once we were up and running, um, we, the, the cost that we charge at the gate, um, pays for the garbage. The, um, we operate curbside recycling. And to pay for that, the townships do pay a per household, um, fee for us to come to each house. And then, um, the sale of recyclables helps pay for our processing costs. So between.
And your capital costs?
Um, everything is covered in our capital cost. We do get, um, probably one to two grants a year from, um, Eagle. So Michigan Eagle to pay, like right now, um, we received a grant for them this year to purchase a new loader and a new, um, food scrap collection truck for our compost facility. Last year, we got a grant to upgrade our processing line in our Murph. So, um, grants do help our funding, but, um, our main funding really comes from sale of recyclables and tipping fees at our gate.
So the whole process is self-funding, really?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Wow.
Your, your philosophy of, of not having a single hauler, cause you feel that that would, that would not be competitive. So, as far as you know, are, are the haulers' rates comparable to each other?
Yes.
As a result of that?
Yes, um, so.
We didn't, we don't see that here. We had, we did, well, Saga Talk and Douglas have single hauler contracts, but the township does not. And doing the polling of the, of the haulers, we found there are sometimes wide discrepancies in what they charge.
Yeah, and, and I think some of their charges are either based on either how bad they want the contract, how far away their landfill or Murph is. Um, and whether it's recycling or garbage. So I can't speak too much to the haulers and how their pricing works. Um, but I think by sending them, requiring them to come through our facility really levels their costs. So I mean, they all have their costs to run their trucks down the road to pay their drivers, the upkeep on their trucks, but their tipping fees for the garbage are all the exact same across the board.
We, we've seen push, some pushback in the past at least from residents that don't want to have a single hauler. They want freedom of choice as to who they have pick up their garbage.
Yeah, and our, and our residents do, and our residents do pay for it. So none of the municipalities pay for the garbage.
Right.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Sandy.
Yep.
There's just one thing to tie the, the financial thing up. Uh, and the land was, was, uh, owned by the county originally or? How was that funded?
Um, I think it may have been state land originally. Um, I do not know that for sure. But I do know there is a public use deed on our land. So if a, um, private company or private hauler were to buy us out or buy our facility, um, they actually would need to go through some legal action to change that deed for the land.
Wow. Wow. Okay.
All right. I will continue. Um, so now I'm gonna hop into our recycling. So I've been talking about waste. Now I'm gonna get a little bit more into recycling. So we do operate a Murph. Um, so again, by, with the fact that we operate our Murph, we operate our trucks and we do our own education. Um, we really have our hands, um, in, in the entire process, which does make it easier for us that we're not necessarily working with contracts, contracted Murphs or contracted haulers. And so we are a dual stream facility. Um, by being dual stream, our materials come in relatively clean. So we are able to, um, sort them, process them and sell them at a higher value than what, um, single stream recyclables would before. So like I said, part of our funding is based on the sale of recyclables. It's really important for us, um, to make sure we have good, clean, high quality, uh, materials coming out of our Murph. Um, so we operate thirteen drop sites here in Emmett County. Um, and we also operate, uh, or we also contract with both Preskill and Sheboygan Counties, which are two neighboring counties. And we process their materials from their drop sites as well. We have curbside recycling collection. Um, and so we have six municipalities within our county. Um, so pretty much in the Harbor Springs, Petoskey area where the houses are more, um, densely located. We operate curbside recycling. Um, in two thousand eighteen, we had a hundred and sixty-five thousand pickups. Um, over eighty percent of our residents recycle. Um, so that's one thing with us having a program in place for thirty years is we have a lot of buy-in, a lot of local support, and it's just kind of the norm here in our community. Um, we do also operate commercial recycling and that's where Kelly saw our sticker on some of the businesses. Um, over four hundred businesses, um, use curbside recycling and those four hundred businesses are all, all also located in Harbor and Petoskey, um, because that's where our trucks run. So I know a lot of places, um, they have commercial haulers, they have residential haulers. Um, ours are the same. So our, both businesses in residential are picked up by the same truck. And so, um, it's a dual stream commercial recycling program as well. One of the main differences between commercial and residential is that, um, commercial has bigger bent, bigger bins. And we have some different education that can be, um, can be customized directly to the business.
Um, Andy, real quick, it's Kelly. What do you do about boxes? Um, you know, shipping boxes for your businesses? Cause we have a really tight downtown space, just like you guys do.
Yep.
In kind of like historic districts. So, um, how are you, how do you manage that?
So we actually, in this picture, you can see we have ninety-six gallon carts, but that really doesn't cut it for a lot of retail shops. So, um, this is as big as we offer right now. So anything beyond this, and that actually is another thing that is, um, included in our ordinance is that haulers, um, so the waste haulers are required to provide or required to offer a cardboard dumpster to anyone that they have a garbage dumpster for. Um, so a lot of cardboard is collected by the haulers. Um, since it is not residential garbage, the cardboard does not need to come to us. So the haulers are allowed, if they own a Murph in the area, the haul, the waste haulers, when they're collecting cardboard are allowed to haul that out of county. Um, that's just something that we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the truck, we don't have the dumpsters. Um, but as far as small spaces, because we do come across that issue where a lot of businesses don't have a back of house big enough for, um, a dumpster. One of the haulers, so it's actually our small local hauler, not one of the, um, bigger ones. They pick up a loose cardboard. So, um, I, I don't know how it exactly works, but I know downtown businesses can put, um, loose cardboard broken down flat at the curb and one of the waste haulers will pick that up.
Okay. Thank you. Are you gonna talk about composting for commercial restaurants too? Like how you do food scraps?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, plastic, aluminum and glass?
Yep. So that is with our dual stream. Um, so paper boxes and bags, including plastic bags go into one bin. And then metal, plastic, um, glass and paper cartons go into our container stream. So they go into the other bin.
And Andy, is everything at your facility hand sorted or it's automated?
So we, our paper boxes and bags is hand sorted. Our containers line, um, we actually just upgraded it, we finished that, um, October of twenty twenty. And we did include three robots in that. So we do have some automation.
So how, how are you getting around the flexible plastic problem?
Um, like plastic bags or?
Yeah, we just keep running into the, like, people are not, unless it's the, like, grocery bags, then you can take it to a big box store, but it, it appears that it's a, it clogs the equipment or I don't know if it's just.
It, it does, um, clog equipment, but with us being dual stream, we don't have the same equipment as the single stream facilities. So we are able to pick, um, out the plastic bags by hand. Um, so our sorters, we do have sorters on both lines and, um, we are able to accept plastic film.
Okay.
All right. Um, so also at our facility, we have bulky recycling drop off. In this picture, there's asphalt shingles. Um, unfortunately, we have had to stop accepting asphalt shingles, uh, because there is no market. They used to use them in roads, um, but they were too brittle and the roads weren't holding up. So, um, currently there's no market for asphalt shingles. Um, but we have wood, scrap metal. We also accept tires, electronics, mattresses, paint, bulky plastics, um, all at our facility. Um, we also, uh, accept hazardous, um, a couple hazardous materials year round. Um, and we do three hazardous waste days, which I will get into later. Um, but every, we're open Monday through Saturday. And, um, Monday through Saturday, we accept electronics, light bulbs, batteries and motor wheel.
Um, Andy, how do you keep that from just becoming like a dumping ground and people aren't actually complying with what you're trying to do? Or is that just like you have just enough staff and volunteers that are well-trained that it's okay? Or how do you man that?
So this facility is gated and, um, staffed. We have four attendants on at all time. Um, so this facility, there's people all around, um, and we don't have problems with dumping. But at our thirteen, um, public drop sites that are open twenty-four seven, we do have serious dumping issues. Um, we have one woman who works probably thirty hours a week just cleaning up our drop sites. Just drives around at the pickup truck, picks stuff up and brings it back. But again, because we are the transfer station, um, we do have ways to dispose of that material. It, it's at a cost to us. Um, and it is unfortunate, we are trying to address that, but, um, it doesn't seem to be getting any better.
Thank you.
Um, so now I'm gonna hop into education. This was one of the questions that you had. Um, and that actually was a good segue because we try to educate people on the cost of doing what we're doing. Um, what is recyclable, what's not? The, the, uh, most accurate place to take something, um, whether it's hazardous or bulky. Um, but people still continue to illegally dump. Um, curbside is nice because we our drivers, if there's something in there that's not accepted, they'll leave it. So that, um, educates. But it's really a drop site that has a lot of contamination and a lot of illegal dumping. Um, and by educating the people, um, hopefully, most of them learn and know and understand what actually is recyclable and the right thing to do with it. Um, and our, our, our community does have a history of wanting to be invested in recycling. So for the most part, people get it. And people try to do the right thing. Um, but we do, as far as education, we do press releases. We do tours of our facility, um, for the schools in November is America Recycles Month. So we bring every fourth grader, every fourth grade classroom, um, in our county through our facility every November. We also do true, um, groups for like the local Sierra Club, for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, just any other group that is interested. Um, we're pretty active on Facebook and Instagram. Um, we have a really good website and we're actually in the process of updating that website right now. Um, curbside, um, like I mentioned, the drivers just leave stuff behind. Um, but also in this right-hand corner is an oops tag. Um, so the drivers can leave that on the bin saying, oh, sorry, you left styrofoam in it, or it's just plain not recyclable. Um, so that's a way we can communicate with our residents. Um, when we have a new resident, we have a whole startup packet that we include with a guide or hazardous waste information. Uh, all of our educational materials. Um, our drop site bins have signs that look like this. So this is an example of one of our drop site bin signs. Lindsay works one-on-one with almost all of the four hundred businesses to really meet their needs. Um, whether they're a restaurant or retail, we really try to tailor the educational materials to, um, how their business operates. Um, we did just finish up an educational video, um, highlighting our dual stream system and hope, our intent with that is that people will see that real people sort it, that it actually is made into something and hopefully they um, have more buy-in on doing the right thing. Um, before COVID, we were doing a pretty regular segment with the news. And then the last thing, um, is event recycling, which I'll touch when we talk about the seasonal influx. Is this, um, event recycling, we try to just be out and about and involved and have our faces, um, out there and our signage and be available and approachable. So we have a pretty strong educational program. Any questions on that? All right.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Um, some challenges we have to clean commodities. So some of our contaminations. Contamination is non-container plastic. So a lot of people think it's plastic, it's recyclable. So we have a campaign going on right now called, um, Other Plastics Don't Belong. We only want bottles, cans, cups. Um, Other Plastics Don't Belong, um, bags. Um, so like I said, we accept plastic bags, but we want them in the paper boxes and bags stream, not the container stream. Um, so that's a source of contamination. And then we do see sharps and biohazards coming across the line as well. So, um, all three of these things are, um, things that we really try to focus on in our education. Um, so we do have a graphic designer that we work with. Um, and so these are some examples of stuff that we just came up with during um, the last year because of, um, COVID and that kind of stuff. We really don't want any tissues, paper towels, that kind of stuff, um, as a danger to our employees that would be sorting it. No sharps. This is one of the pictures we use for Other Plastics Don't Belong. So some things that we commonly see trying to be recycled, but actually are not recycled, curbside. And then no styrofoam. Um, another thing that we really try to focus on is local markets. So ninety-seven percent of our recyclable supply businesses in Michigan. Um, so another thing to keep us strong, to keep us resilient when markets are up and down. Um, if we actually have really relationships with our, um, end markets, it really helped us when a lot of them weren't really taking recyclables anymore. Um, we really were able to keep shipping our materials throughout this past year.
Hi, Andy. Um, my name's Ryan High, so city manager for Saga Talk. Um, brilliant presentation so far. Super impressive. Uh, a question with the market because it is part of your revenue stream.
Yes.
Um, what is the, the current status and, and how do you adjust, uh, year over year with the fluctuations?
So that is a great question. Um, markets really in the last two to three years have been down. Um, they have affected our budget. Um, and there's really not much that you can do to make up for down markets other than, um, just, I mean, a lot of Murphs have not been able to sell their stuff at all. Um, and because of the relations, relationships we have and because, um, we keep it local, we have been able to keep moving it, just maybe not at top dollar. Uh, but we're still ahead of a lot of the facilities that have either had to landfill it or stockpile it. Um, and yeah, I, I mean, we've had to make some, like, just be a little more stringent on our budget. Um, we haven't had to cut any programs as of right now. Um, but that's definitely something to keep in mind. Markets are starting to come back a little bit, um, as the beginning of twenty twenty-one is looking better than last year did. Um, but it's totally something that is not in our control.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that and I'm glad to hear that, um, you're, you're doing well. And then another question. I saw that really cute picture of the, uh, the kid with the power wheel pulling the, uh, the container there. How do you guys get around uh, the, the child labor laws in, in Emmett County?
They offer.
Jokes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, commercial recycling, um, one way we address commercial recycling is like I mentioned. Um, so commercial recycling, one way we address commercial recycling is like I mentioned, Lindsay. It really has a relationship with every single business. She is persistent. And if there's areas or office buildings or kind of neighborhoods that don't currently have recycling, she will just go and door knock and see if they're interested. And that's not very common for us because most businesses, when they start up, they just automatically call us and say, hey, how do I get set up for recycling? But beyond that, it's it's not much different than the rest of our program. Kelly, did you have any specific questions on the commercial recycling?
I don't think so. I think I think you're covering it. Great.
Okay. Yep. Um, so another question is our seasonal influx. So our population triples. In northern Michigan, we are right on Lake Michigan, around Little Trevers Bay, similar to you guys. We have Harbor and Petoskey are two cities that are just right across the bay from each other. We Harbor Springs, Petoskey work together. And one of the main things that we really do in the summer is do event recycling. And so this is a picture of a regatta. It's kind of hard to tell, but we do have event recycling bins throughout. And now we're starting to do some zero waste events. So it's really the, some events we approach, other events approach us. But we do probably thirty to forty events throughout the summer where we just collect mostly bottles, cans, and cups. And then we haul them back, we process them, but that's one way that we adjust to the seasonal influx. Beyond that, we really just have to increase our staff, so our sorting staff, our driving staff, and even our office staff to handle the volumes coming through and the amount of calls, the amount of questions, the amount of residents. But beyond that, we don't do a ton to change the program seasonally.
Um, Andy, so do you have someone that works directly with all of these organizations to do the zero waste events? Or is there like a slide deck that we could take a look at? Because I think there's so many things that go on here that we could potentially look at your model and see how we might be able to implement it.
Yeah, I'm going to make a note of that. Um, it is a pretty informal program. We always get it's summer intern and that's where I started doing the summer intern with the event recycling. But again, Lindsay, the relationships, so Lindsay personally used to do all the events. And she, some of them she would even do on her own time, but she would reach out and she would facilitate getting the bins. She would work a lot of the events. Now we are trying to formalize that system. So now we, I think even on our website, we might have an event like inquiry form. But it pretty is, it's pretty simple. We just say, how many bins do you need or work with them to determine how many bins? And then we have kind of three different levels. One, they can come up, pick up the bins, bring the material back, and they just pretty much use our bins for smaller events. For some events, we will go, we will set it up and then we'll clean it up that evening or the next day. And then the third level is we actually charge for staff time to actually staff the event to work it, to make sure that all the bins are empty at all times. And then we haul the material off at the end of the night. Or if they're on the curbside route, we it's coordinated to be picked up for curbside service.
So Andy, this is Garn. So on this picture, I'm seeing there like smack dab in the middle, there's a, looks like a plastic bag. Is that just a trash container? Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, those actually are our event recycling bins. So they're called screen bins. Frames that fold up flat and then you just put a bag in it and the lid on top and they are very portable. Great for event recycling. They don't take up much space.
Okay, then I'm going to back up way back to the, you went to Northern?
I did.
Wildcats. Go Wildcats. So you started as an intern from Northern through the Environmental Services Program? Is that what it was?
Um, my degree was actually Environmental Studies and Sustainability, which was a new program while I was up there.
Got it. Very good.
Andy, I had a quick question. During the events, how do you handle food contamination?
So we really try to have clear signage on the bins. And for most of the events, we only accept bottles, cans, and cups. So a lot of times there isn't necessarily food contamination with that. We do one big event each year and it's called Bliss Fest. And that has a couple thousand people. It's a music festival, it's camping. So there is a ton of food there and that is a huge operation. We get probably twenty volunteers a day to help with that. So that's on a whole different level than something like this where we're really just trying to target the bottles, cans, and cups.
And so what happens if I am there and I have a cup and it's half full of whatever, of soda or something like that? And then I, somebody puts it in that bin. Is that acceptable at your recycle center?
Um, something like that, we generally, because that does happen. We'll just like cut a hole in the bottom of the bag and let it drain out and try to get as much liquid out as possible. But yes, for the most part, that would be able to be recycled.
Okay, and then I have two other quick questions. One is, what is your perspective on compostable, compostable versus recyclable?
So we do some zero waste events. And in if that's the case, we work with the event organizer from the beginning to make sure they're purchasing the correct compostable. So there's a lot of terminology that's questionable, whether it's biodegradable, biodegradable, compostable, that kind of stuff. So we make sure that it meets our specs for our compost facility. And once they purchase the products that meet our specs, then generally we try to work with them to not have any plastic in that event. And we just try to have just our food waste bins that everything can go into, to try and avoid contamination. There are some events that do still have plastic forks or stuff like that. And if that's the case, then we either provide one of our staff members or a volunteer for the event to stand by that food waste bin and make sure that no, no plastics go in.
Okay, my, my other question is, when you have people come for short term rentals or they're in the hotels or whatever the case is there, what challenges do you have on that front for people who are there for one night, two nights a week? For them to be able to work with your recycle program?
Yeah, and so that kind of stuff, the hotels actually all work with us pretty well. The housekeeping staff is trained in most of the hotels, at least the ones who do recycle. They're trained and they're passionate about making sure only recyclables end up in the recycling bins. As far as rentals, that's a lot more difficult and that's really up to the landlord. Some of the management companies just don't even worry about it. They don't even try. Others leave signage, have very clearly marked bins. And that's when our educational pieces come in. We have some magnets, we've got posters, we've got eight and a half by eleven flyers that they just post right by the bins and make it very clear for curbside recycling. And with curbside recycling, if there's contamination or mixing in the bins, our drivers will leave it behind. So either then the landlord's responsible for figuring it out, cleaning it up, or they just choose not to participate.
And so for each location, the truck driver gets out to look in the bin?
Yes, so we are, yeah, we are not automated on our collection system. So yes, the drivers do get out at every single curbside stop.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so now I'm going to hop to our compost facility. So we do create both compost and wood chips on our, on site. Um, so the way we got started composting, and I'm not sure, I think it was maybe mid to late nineties. There is a yard waste ban, so in the landfill. So no yard waste is allowed to go into landfills. And because of that, we decided that we would become an opportunity for yard waste to be dropped off. A lot of our municipalities, our cities do collect yard waste spring and fall from the curb. And some of them have their own facilities and others bring it to us. So leaves, sticks, stuff like that. And so we have been composting yard waste for probably twenty-five years. So that's nothing new to us. But in six, two thousand and sixteen, we started doing food scrap collection. We realized that organics is a huge part of garbage. And it is what is really creates methane when in the landfill. So we thought it was our part to keep organics out of the landfills. And so we did a pilot program and just in the summer to see how food scrap collection would go. We retrofitted an old hook lift truck with one of these, actually green drop site bins. We retrofitted it to be our food scrap truck. And the program just really took off. We have about forty businesses that participate. And we say anything that was once alive can go in that, in in our program. So paper products, food products. And our facility is big enough that we can handle meat, bones, and dairy. So some of the things that are not accept, not acceptable in a backyard bin because they don't get hot enough. So that's another thing that we tried to make it comprehensive, that any type of food, food scraps, pre-consumer, post-consumer can all go into our compost facility. Any specific questions on that program?
Hey, Andy, it's Ryan again. How, do you have sifters to to get like small plastics and and other stuff out of the vegetative debris?
Yes, so um, once the compost is finished and we are a slow facility. So it takes a year and a half to two years for it to really fully break down. I know some dedicated compost facilities, really, it's a lot faster process, but our process is pretty slow. So once the material is finished breaking down, it is ready to be composted. We do hire a screener that comes in and screens the material before we sell it.
Okay, I think you, I may have missed this. I think you just answered it. So you then sell the, sell the compost. Do you allow your residents to come and grab some?
So we do sell it. There is no free residential. I know a lot of communities do that where residents can come get it for free. We do sell it. We do bulk sales and we also do a sale in the fall of it. It's normally thirty dollars a yard. When it's on sale, we drop it down to twenty dollars a yard. And a lot of landscapers and farmers buy it in bulk. So that's one thing that we're actually working on right now is working with the road commissions to use it in roadside projects. Relandscaping after the roads are finished. We just met with the road commission last week. City of Petoskey used it in a project last year and we're very happy with the results. So we're hoping that we can work with the county road commission to get it in a couple of projects this year.
Very cool. Thank you.
This is Patrick. Have you worked with vendors to incorporate compostable utensils and and packaging?
Yes, so for businesses that use our program, we definitely do. And then that kind of gets into kind of interesting area is a lot of businesses do use compostable cups. But then they end up going to the landfill anyways because they either don't have access to a compost facility or they are not recyclable because they're compostable. So there is a lot of of education kind of just across the board with compostable versus recyclable materials and products.
Do you, do you find that the cost of the compostable products is a major barrier with the vendors?
Yes, yes, it can be.
Andy, it's Kelly again. So for your downtown businesses, the restaurants that participate with the composting, what is, what does their bin look like? And how often are you having to pick it up so that, you know, it's maintaining a clean space for all of your tourists and, you know, locals that are downtown?
Yes.
So.
So we actually just use, and because it started as a pilot, we just used actually some of our residential recycling bins. So it's just a sixty-four gallon rolling cart is what it's collected in. And some of them have just one, others have four or five. And we do collect them on Tuesdays and Fridays in the summer and just Tuesdays in the winter. And we really don't, with that frequency of collection, we haven't had issues. Some of the vendors or some of the restaurants choose to bag their compostable materials and compostable bags. So we can provide those for the restaurants as well to help with cleanliness, both in the restaurant or store and what, once it's in the bin.
But it sounds like, I mean, you've, because composting is new even for you guys. You guys have been able to kind of retrofit this and make it work for the space constraints that exist.
Yeah, and since we started in two thousand and sixteen with the pilot, that's why in two thousand and twenty, we finally said this program's here to stay. Let's invest in it. And that's when we applied for the Eagle Grant and they ordered us a new truck and a new loader to turn these compost piles.
Wow. That's great. Thank you.
Andy, it's Ryan again.
Yeah.
Do you get any support or grants through other environmental organizations?
Um, not that I can think of. We do get quite a few grants from like local community foundations. Normally, we do at least one through the Petoskey Harbor Springs Area Community Foundation. And then when we have a bigger project, there's a couple more family foundations that we reach out to that are pretty supportive of us. But our big grants mostly come from Eagle.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so again, with our compost and we have a product that we're trying to sell, we're really trying to build an educational campaign around compost. A lot of people think compost is just dirt or it's topsoil, but it has a lot more nutrients than dirt or topsoil. It retains moisture a lot better, it prevents erosion. So we also have educational campaigns on uses for compost. And then I mentioned, we have a compost sale in the fall. So this is just an example of our, one of our flyers that we put out during our fall compost sale. Um, any other questions about compost before I happened to our hazardous waste program?
I have a quick question. It's Rana, and I just wonder if the county or the individual cities strongly recommend people use compostable or is it a requirement? If, how does that work?
At this point, there, there's really no opinion from the cities or municipalities. It doesn't necessarily affect them at all. So it's up to the businesses. And we just try to educate the business on what might be best for them.
And is that simply that you provide them a flyer or something that just says the advantages of using one over the other?
Um, so again, it's Lindsay building relationships with them. So they will call and tell us kind of what their questions are, what their issues are, what they're trying to accomplish. And it's just really a conversation.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so our hazardous waste program, so this is a program. We do a household hazardous waste event three times a year at our facility. It is free for county residents. Just last year, with it becoming more and more expensive and less revenue in the last year, we did start asking for donations and people were generous. They gave about an average of twenty dollars per car, which really did help cover our fees. And so M Dard is Michigan Department of Agriculture. I'm not exactly sure what it is. But I know they do provide a grant that, it's called the Clean Sweep Grant, and they cover pesticides, I think, up to seven thousand dollars in our community. So I'm not sure if it's based, the cost comes based on a per capita amount or what. But I know that is a grant that we just get every single year and to cover the cost of our pesticide recycling at our hazardous waste events. But overall, the events cost us about fifteen thousand dollars per event. And we welcome thirty thousand residents. It's open to thirty thousand residents, but we probably get maybe three hundred cars to come through each event. So I, I'm not sure if that would help you guys with considering it or budgeting or anything like that.
That helps. And I looked up M Dard because I couldn't remember either Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development.
Okay, thank you. Um, so any specific questions on the hazardous waste program?
Yeah, this is Garn. So you do it three times a year. Do you see the average number of folks come through each time? So is this thirty thousand dollars eat, or thirty thousand residents each time? Or is that? Or is that over the year?
Our county includes thirty thousand residents. They're all welcome come. I mean, we do it by appointment only. So we do, I think, twenty appointments every fifteen minutes. And we our events are from nine till noon. And we do fill up every single, all three events each year.
And how do you publicize? Well, I that's probably a redundant question because you all communicate with people quite frequently. So we're getting ready to do one for the very first time and the same kind of thing, setting it up with twenty vehicles per every fifteen minutes. And I I am really trying to be cognizant of the fact that we haven't done this in a while. And the best ways in which to communicate with folks so that they're aware. The last thing I want is, of course, it'll happen anyway. I didn't know anything about it, you know?
Yes.
I'm curious of.
Can we get that? It seems like after our third one of the year, we always get a ton of calls saying, when can I bring this stuff in? And we had just wrapped up for the year. But um, we do, this is one of the few things that we actually do a newspaper ad. We don't use newspaper a ton, but we figure that a lot of the people who might have old stuff stored up for years would also be the type of people reading newspapers. So we figured that newspaper is more effective in this than social media. We do definitely put it on our website and we put it in our startup packets. Whenever we have new residents or new customers, we just put a little flyer about this program in there.
And then do you have, the other question I'm getting a lot is so the things that actually are taken. Do you have a list or something that has?
And really, we say anything that's not. And again, because it's on our facility, we have the recyclable drop off location. We have the garbage drop off location. If people are unclear, we let them bring it to us. And we accept anything that's not explosive or yeah, no explosives and no ammo. I think are the only things that we don't and maybe nothing radioactive, I think might be the third one.
That might be helpful.
But other than that, we can accept anything that comes through.
Okay, got it.
And we do, once they make an appointment, we send them a confirmation. And I'm happy to share the confirmation with you guys that just has some kind of instructions for what to do or what to expect when they show up.
That would be great. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Andy, this is Kelly again. So when did you guys start doing your HHWs? Is that a long time thing?
Yes, yeah, they've been going on for as long as I know. I'm I'm sure they started probably close to when the program started.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then one, I think this might be one of the last things is public space recycling. Public space recycling is a very tough one to tackle. For us, we needed buy-in from the city. The city DPW, they're the ones to empty the garbage bins downtown. So they're also also responsible for emptying the recycling bin. One thing that we really try to push with them is garbage goes in a black bag, recycling goes in a clear bag. Just for them, they can throw it all in the same truck and then it's easy for them to separate when they get to the dumpster. But they still have pushed back on that because it is an extra step for their employees that are already busy. And another thing, again, with us being dual stream, we aren't going to ask residents in public space to have dual stream separation. So we decided for our downtown areas, we're only accepting bottles and cans. We leave the messaging as simple as that. That's the type of stuff that people are likely going to be walking around with. And we try to keep the messaging very simple. As you can see, this is one of the bins downtown Petoskey. And we try to make it just as simple as it can be for the city employees and as simple as it can be for residents using it.
Andy, this is Ryan. Is it the expectation that the the city will sort through any commingled trash? That's what the recycling, okay.
Nope, that is something that we've understood that that responsibility is on us. If one of the bags gets to our Murph and it's contaminated, then it's on our guys to choose whether they want to sort through it or if it's too contaminated and it just goes into the garbage. So that's why it's important for us to keep the messaging clear, to keep the labeling accessible. So that way there is less contamination.
And follow-up question, do you provide the 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 trash cans or the messaging? Or do you do you help the cities in any way with that or?
Yeah, so we created the messaging, we created the labels, but the city provided the garbage bins or the recycling bins. And that is actually another grant that I can share with you guys. If you are interested in public space recycling, Keep America Beautiful does a public space recycling bin grant each year. And I know we have applied for it on behalf of our football stadium, our county Parks and Rec Department. And I believe and for the community college here. So I know we've received that grant a couple of times and really they just provide bins. They provide public space recycling bins and they ask you to provide data back to them once the bins are in place. So it's a pretty simple grant. I'm not sure where they are in the grant cycle, but they do one almost every year. Anything else with public space recycling? All right.
That's great.
Um, and then one thing that I know Lindsay gave Kelly some feedback on was some industry groups that we are involved in. And so next cycle is brand new. It is a collaboration with Resource Recycling Systems, which is some consultants and the Michigan Recycling Coalition and Eagle, I think, are all involved in next cycle. And next cycle, they're calling it a business incubator. So it's a program, it's it's honestly kind of overwhelming, kind of complicated. I know there's been a ton of webinars on it just for them trying to get the word out there about it. But the main idea is if you have a problem or a question, you apply to this program. And they'll try to take your problem or question. They'll try to find somebody who can help you solve it or try to find a solution for it and they'll try to connect you with funding for it. So I'm not super into this program yet, but I know there's the six different tracks. And one of the tracks is public-private partnerships. So that might be a track that you guys, if you're interested in, could look into and see if there's a specific question that you guys have, if they can pair you up with someone that can work with you or someone who can help you and try and help you find funding for that as well. So that's just getting kicked off. I know they're doing one track launch at a time. And I think they just launched the first track, which actually might be relevant as well. That one is called the Micros Track and I think that's for projects under ten thousand dollars. So this isn't necessarily a grant, but it's a whole program where you'll have support and connections and networking and funding and all sorts of stuff. And so it's a new concept in Michigan. They've done it in Colorado with quite a bit of success. But if you just look up next cycle, the website should come up. And there's a lot of case studies on the website of kind of projects that could be accomplished through this program. Next is RRS. I know Lindsay mentioned them to Kelly. They are consultants who we work with when we have specific projects. I know they also do a lot of pilot projects or feasibility studies. So I don't know, again, maybe down the road, they might be a good resource for you guys. The Michigan Recycling Coalition is a great resource. It's the industry group that all of, most of the recycling programs in the state are a part of. They provide webinars, they provide a lot of networking and they do one annual conference each year. And they address everything from Murph operations to negotiating contracts to education. So they've got all sorts of different tracks that they address, both in their webinars and in their conference. And they have a great newsletter, if nothing else, to just sign up for the Michigan Recycling Coalition newsletter to just kind of stay in the loop on what's going on. And then, as I have mentioned, Eagle, they are great. They've got some good programs going right now and some good grants that come out each year. And they also have a regional recycling represent representative in each. I think there's six or seven of them throughout Michigan. So if you guys haven't already connected with your regional representative, that'd be a good contact for you guys as well. Any any questions about the industry groups? Okay, um, so grant tips. Like I just mentioned, both Eagle and MRC, almost anything that would be relevant, come through their email, email list, e-newsletters, that kind of stuff. We use local foundations. I mentioned the Keep America Beautiful Public Space Bin Grant. And as far as grant writing, just following tips and don't be afraid to ask for help. Even in one thing that we have been told is go ask for the full amount and don't be afraid to apply for things that might be a stretch because some of them, they don't get a lot of applications. So a lot of them are pretty generous with their funds. And then I know Kelly did mention or ask about single hauler contracts, but I did kind of mention that at the beginning. So I'm not sure if there's any other questions on that. And then that is all I have. So I know it's a lot of information.
This is Patrick. I just have a small question. Have you done any efforts to reduce the use of plastic bags?
We have not. That's, we have a long, long, long wish list of kind of campaigns and things that we would like to get to someday. And I think just reducing plastics in general is one of them. But we, that's not anything that we've put a lot into yet.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions if I may. Excuse me, what's your annual budget?
Um, we're about four million dollars.
Okay, and what percentage of that four million roughly is grants versus the, I think you'd call it pays you throw or whatever?
Um, so we really, I know some programs actually are fully grant funded or a big part of their budget relies on grants. Really, for us, we use grants just for capital projects, so not for our operating costs. So within that four million dollar budget, that's really our operating budget. So none of that is grant funded. But we get, we probably get, like last year, we did that our big Murph upgrades and we got about eight hundred thousand dollars in grants for a two million dollar project. But when we apply for grants, they're always for a specific project and not necessarily for our operating funds.
Okay, I'm confused. You said none of the four million is grant funded?
Correct.
Where does that money come from?
Um, either sale of recyclables or incoming garbage or tip fees or sale of compost or curbside municipal contracts.
Okay, this is a big business. So what, what, how many staff do you have? If you wouldn't mind breaking it down, you said you have a salesperson that goes to the commercial businesses and keeps them going. You've got onsite workers, you've got administration staff.
Yes.
How does that break down? How many, you know, what's your total staff and how's that break down?
We have five staff in the office and our office is in the county building, so we're actually not at the facility. So we have five staff and that's working on the administrative side, the education, the outreach, the grants, invoicing, billing, that kind of stuff. So there's five of us in the office. We have two managers at the facility. One oversees pretty much all the people, the other oversees all the equipment. And then we have about, we have six drivers. We have five transfer station attendants and we have about fifteen people in processing.
This is a big business. And what a great thing that you inspect every bin before you dump it, before it comes in, which is, doesn't seem practical, but it's probably how it works because we're trying to figure out how our hauler determines if they're going to dump a whole thing because it's contaminated. You guys, you guys nail that down right at the bin. That's why you have so many drivers, I guess, you know? But it's it's working for you, but it's it's a different model. And and I will just kind of jump in on single hauler. It really does work here. It is very competitive because when the cities contract for that, they put it out for bid.
Yes, absolutely. When the city's paying for it, but for us with the residents paying for it, there is no.
Oh, no, cities don't pay for it. The cities put out a RFP, all the haulers, we have a list of this is what we want to see. We awarded to the most competitive hauler, but they have to do all the billing to the individuals.
Okay.
So the cities don't handle any of the administration. And we know in our community that the two communities that have single hauler get a much better rate than the community that does not. So and the people in the community that does not have single hauler can go to one of any four or five haulers and get their best deal, but it isn't even close to what the, when we pool our resources with all our citizens and do a single hauler. So it's a little different thing and it's worked for us, you know, so.
Yeah, so Andy, I'm going to switch quick gears and I would assume that the answer to this is yes, and you may not know. Are you, I know with, so a couple of us have gotten involved with the the local solid waste planning committee in our county through Allegan County because because of the upcoming Part 115 update. Are you all involved with that, obviously?
Yes. We are. We aren't very deep into it right now. We don't have a committee in place yet. We're still kind of waiting to hear on what the rules are with Part 115. I know that the state is doing their mega data collection, so we've given them all of our data. So we are keeping our fingers in the polls of the Part 115, the solid waste planning committees, but we have not quite gotten a start on it yet.
Okay, I was just curious. So Daniel and I for sure attended the first meeting. We haven't been officially appointed, so to speak, but it was rather, I I think it's such a great opportunity to update our plan, especially for Allegan County where we are. Because it's not a, the, our recycling efforts aren't really truly countywide unless you buy into or contract with Allegan County. And so I'm I was just curious where y'all might be with that. So, okay, very good.
But it is really good that you guys are part of that. Those solid waste plans can go a long way and really setting up a good recycling program long term.
Yeah, thank you. And then the metadata or mega data, I'm sorry, Daniel, he's on here on this call. He has been kind of our go-to guy and and did reach out to them and was contacted them about providing data, right, Daniel? Am I speaking out of turn?
No, that that's correct. They were a little slow to respond to us, but we have gotten a response from them. I have to to get back to them. They would prefer if they could speak to us directly. So I don't know if we'd have, you know, that included in either a special meeting or one of our regular meetings. But just kind of explain what the the project is and to make sure that they've identified the the correct people to provide them with the data because it does have to be through the municipality.
Very cool. This is great.
Garnet, got a question. Did we do a presentation from the Allegan County group?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah. Because it's still cold.
You know, it doesn't even, from what I remember, it doesn't even hold a candle to what Emma County's doing.
Yeah, and our, you know, what's different with us, Barry, is our recycling, Allen County recycling is basically within. is basically within community health and they are right now up to their eyebrows in COVID vaccinations. That's, that's where they're all focused. Uh, but you're right, it's, it's a whole different, um, as far as where it's structurally at.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's, it is. But I, and Andy, you may have some thoughts on this. I think that, um, from everything I'm reading and following, um, from both the state, especially the state, there seems to be a real, uh, push and emphasis, uh, towards, uh, greater recycling. At least it feels that way, that that's where we're moving as a state, uh, if not as a state, also as a nation. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, absolutely. Um, the Part 115 is a huge deal. We're pretty, um, sad that it didn't get passed last year. Um, I think some people are pretty hopeful that it will get passed this year. Um, but really it's to put infrastructure and, um, investment in the state. Um, and one of the main things that they're trying to work on is incentivizing recycling over waste. But also, um, to create, I mean, part of, a big part of it is the solid waste planning. And the solid waste planning, one of the goals of that is to create regional hubs. Um, so not that everyone's kind of doing their own thing, but to, um, kind of pool resources and accomplish as much as each area or each region can.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty cool. I know that, is that still in committee? Sorry, I'm going to get really down into the weeds. Is that still in committee right now? Do you know?
Yes, I don't think anything's moving too fast.
Yeah, unfortunately. Okay, very cool.
Cool.
All right. All right, anybody else before we let this young woman go?
Uh, well, I just want to personally say thank you to Andy. You guys, I sent her a list of a lot of questions that you guys all sent me and she put this entire deck together, which answered every last one. So I really appreciate your help with our group. It was fantastic.
Well, thank you very much. Note to us, where, like I said, we're trying to move recycling forward as a state, so we're happy to help out where we can.
Yeah, so I got one quick question, sorry, before I let you go. So the, the way that Kelly found you was the sticker, so to speak, on the windows of the businesses. Is that something that's part of your, like, welcome packet or is that part of, is it Lindsay? I think her efforts or?
Um, so it's, yeah, like, I, I know our chamber does that as well. A chamber, um, business gets a sticker to put on their front door and we do the same with, um, our recycling program. Whether they choose to put it on there or not, we do give them, um, kind of a window cling when they sign up for our curbside services.
Nice, okay, window cling. That's a great idea. All right, okay, I'm done. Awesome. Andy, thanks so much. Really appreciate it. All right, thank you so much. All right, crew, uh, I really appreciate, uh, everybody dialing in for this. It, it, very informative. Uh, I mean, you know, we're not a county, so it's not like we're trying to take on this, this huge endeavor. But, um, to be, uh, knowledgeable of all the possibilities, I think is really kind of cool. Um, uh, again, you've heard me say this several times that, uh, you know, we're a year ahead of where we were when we started. And, uh, i- in my opinion, we've come a long way and it's kind of nice to really know enough to be dangerous. At least we're not sitting here brand new trying to digest all this information. I really feel like, uh, we have a, a good solid grasp of where we are and where we could go and all the possibilities. Um, so, um, for that, I thank you and, uh, Kelly, thanks so much for putting this together. So, any, any other closing comments before we, we head out for this beautiful day? Barry's got his hands up. Go for it.
Yeah, I'm afraid that, uh, tomorrow's meeting is my, uh, annual tax appointment with my accountant. So I'm waiting for a call back. I can't believe she even wants me to walk into her office, but I may not be here tomorrow. So if you bear with me, I have a few questions.
Okay.
How did your wormy wop go?
Uh, good. So Ryan is, uh, on the line.
That's about.
Yeah, um, is Jim still with us? I don't know if he's still with us. I can't see. Okay, yeah, really quickly and I'll ask Ryan to, to add in on this. Uh, it went very well. We met with Jim Yost and the two other gentlemen from Wormies Monday, 11:30 out at the old airport property. Um, you know, there's, there's great, uh, possibility there. Uh, I do believe, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, the ball is really kind of in their court to kind of come back and with their plan of what, what they have in mind, what they could do, how they see it working, that kind of thing. So, you know, this is, uh, they were of course very excited, um, by everything. Uh, so Ryan, what do you have to add?
Um, that's, that's right, Garnet. Uh, they were going to go back and they were working with, uh, with someone to do a, a site plan essentially to, um, draw up what their, what their needs are as far as space. Uh, one of the, one of the tricky parts, um, from the, the government side, um, is going to be, um, finding a way to, uh, basically create a, uh, level the playing field, um, to make it a fair process for any other vendor who may be serving a similar need or, or, or providing a similar service. Um, so they're aware of that. They've, they've, they've run into this in Kent County, uh, so they don't seem to be discouraged, uh, uh, by that. Um, and yeah, the ball is in their court and we brought Scott Herbert out there with, who was our DPW supervisor. Uh, he's a, he's a great guy. He's just, he's open to a lot of ideas. He's extremely busy. So, you know, he's a little reluctant to get into too many projects. But, um, you know, one of Scott's long-term concerns, and we're talking 10, 20, 30 years. Um, and he said he's going to be working for the city that long, um, is that, you know, if we accumulate all of this vegetative debris, uh, that's going to cause issues down, down the road, um, with, with site capacity. So this would actually serve, uh, a, a need, uh, in getting rid of that, that material. Uh, so I think there's a, there's a great way to frame it and, um, I think it checks a lot of boxes. It could, I'm, I'm super excited about it. So well, the ball is in their court and we'll just slowly work into it.
Yeah, and, and, uh, as a reminder, uh, Jim will, will, we've got, I think, two mini presentations, if you will, for the April meeting and Jim is one of those. Um, but for those of you who don't know, uh, Jim and the Wormies crew, uh, have to vacate the, the, I think it's the half acre that they're on, um, right now over in Genesee. And, um, so they are actually, uh, going to be in need of new space. And, uh, it was Barry who suggested, hey, um, maybe we should initiate a discussion with them about, um, our old airport property. So that's, stay tuned.
Let me, uh, qualify that too. For you people that don't know, uh, if you haven't seen the planes coming in and out at the airport, because there's no airport out there, but back in the 1930s, that there was a gentleman that donated that land to us. He must have been a, a pilot and, uh, he wanted to see a little airport in our community. Uh, it never happened, but there's approximately 160 acres out there. And there's a lot of land and the city of Sawgatuck has been trying to find ways to make that a usable piece of property. And, uh, for years we would, uh, go, every 10 years we go to a RV park. We thought an RV park would be a great place to attract people into our community, uh, get them in a place where they can park their thing and all that. Well, the problem with the RV parks is that they needed a 20 to 30-year lease to pay for the infrastructure they put in. And the city of Sawgatuck is, I believe is by charter, Ryan, uh, that we cannot lease anything for more than 10 years. Uh, then we had a guy who wanted to put a golf course out there. He needed a 40-year payback. We can only do 10 years. So that just sits there. So the city has always been trying to think, what can we use that property for? And, uh, so I kind of do the wormy thing through what we're doing here. I thought, well, here's maybe a guy and, uh, who won't need a 30-year payoff. And, uh, you know, we can probably do it in five-year increments or whatever and try to keep them there if he's profitable. But, uh, maybe that's something, so whatever happens still has to be approved by the city council. So this is not a slam dunk, but this just seemed to me to be a good fit, uh, for the property, but we've never figured out what to do with it.
Yeah, and you know, I think, uh, from an environmental perspective, um, you know, we heard Andy say it. Uh, this is such a good environmental move. Uh, if you think, you know, our city right now is doing brush and leaf cleanup and that's exactly where all that material is going. And that is material that Jim can use, uh, and Wormies can use. And it's, you know, there's, it's, it's better than having it sit there and build up and create bad things for our environment. So.
All right, I've got two more questions. I'm going to, you know, hold you guys a little bit because I can't be there tomorrow. Um, it, it's a planning day tomorrow for the, uh, hazardous waste thing, which I wish I could be in. But, uh, again, I want to make sure that you know that I want to volunteer. I want to be at the thing. I won't be there just tying up Garnet, but you know, throw me in there somewhere.
Okay.
And then.
You'll regret that.
Give me the worst job, I know, but that's.
They're all only good jobs, only good jobs.
Uh, my questions, uh, will probably go to Ryan, uh, is like, who's going to be making the appointments for these, uh, 300 people or whatever it's going to be? Is that going to be, uh, city staff's going to do that or is one of the volunteers? Garden, yeah, ahead, so you should already thought of that.
Yes, I have. Um, yeah, and I'll go in that, into that tomorrow. But basically for those who are here, here real quick, um, there's a thing called signup genius that's free and you can set up the whole mechanism to get people, uh, to sign up online. And, um, we'll use a couple of different ways to get the word out so folks can call if they need to. But, yeah, I, I don't want to burden the staff with this at all.
I was a little worried about that and, uh, so one of the committee members will manage that software program, I'm sure. So that's good. Uh, who's signing the contracts with the lab guys? Uh, they, you know, we, they're not going to show up without somebody being on the hook if something goes wrong. Is the city now going to be signing the city of Sawgatuck, signing the contracts with the waste haulers?
Yeah, Barry, I, that's the way it's going to work out. So the city's going to, uh, collect the, the, the revenue, um, from the various entities and, and we'll, we'll, we'll cut the check.
Okay, and then he refunded if we don't use it all or, and what if we go over budget? Well, how are we covered? If there's a waste bill or something like that?
We're not, we're not going to go over budget, Barry. People, we've, people have been very, very generous. We'll be just fine. We'll, we'll be fine.
I'll be there with a donation as well, you know, so we're.
Cool. Yeah, you know, it's great to hear Andy say that because everyone I've talked to who manages one of these household hazardous waste stays, they said people are so generous and that, that is really helpful. Um, ideally, uh, what I would love is to have enough cachet that we could actually consider doing a second one in the fall. And that's where Rotary is. They're like, let's do another one. I'm like, oh my God, let's just do this one first, you know?
And I will donate generously, you know, so.
All right.
So, sorry, I'm going to miss you tomorrow. Uh, thanks for bearing with me at the end of this long meeting.
Yeah, very good. And thank you again, Kelly. This was, this was wonderful. A little overwhelming. Like, oh my God.
Yeah.
But, uh, really cool. You know, in 30 years when we're all still alive and kicking.
And recycling.
Yeah, recycling, that's right. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll look back and say, yeah, we remember that day.
Yeah, no, my pleasure. I thought it was great too.
Very good. All right, great to see you, buddy. See ya.
Bye now.
Bye.